If everybody would stand, Mr. Howard, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which this is the nation.
Thank you, John. I just want to recognize we have Supervisor David online. He's back in Washington today. Want to welcome him. Do we have anyone else online, Hannah? One person? Welcome. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting on February 18th?
I'll second Supervisor Howard's motion.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Can we get a motion to approve our demands and handwritten warrants?
So moved.
And I'll be sure to second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. We will now hear from our sheriff, Mr. PJ Allred.
Good morning, gentlemen. Yeah, I have like three things here this morning real quick. The first one that I'd like to get some, the requesting is, of course, our spillman is a system that we use through our jail, through all law enforcement in Graham County. We're all into that. And it would be really great if I could send, if we could send four employees to the, to the spillman conference that's going to happen in Grapevine, Texas, out of state travel. That's why we need to ask for that permission, for them to be able to do that. It'd be one of our, well, our lead dispatch, it's over our entire dispatch, two of the detention employees where they eat and live a spillman all day long. And then one of our IT workers would be Allison Matice, I think, is who it is. So I'm asking permission for them to be able to go to Grapevine, Texas to this, to this summit.
Okay. Any questions or concerns?
Sounds like it'll be beneficial and needed to keep them educated in this and help us out. So I have no objection whatsoever.
Supervisor David?
Yes, I just wanted to know the source of the funds. Does that come from the jail fund or from the sheriff's office account? And then I also concur with Supervisor Howard. Things are changing so quickly. Updates and new, new methods that it is important to stay current on some of these newer technologies.
Go ahead, Mr. Well.
Sorry, Supervisor David. Tantric question. It's actually split between four different funds. In Dispatch, 135 Fund, which is a special revenue fund, partly out of 100, which is general fund. And then the detention is 137, which is a special revenue fund. And then the IT fund is out of 100. So it's, it's split up four different ways.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Can we get a motion?
Make a motion to approve out-of-state travel for four employees to the Motorola, well, the Spillman 225 Conference in Grapevine, Texas.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes.
My next one is asking approval to be able to apply for the Governor's Office Highway Safety DUI Enforcement Overtime, which is about 26,000, I think. And also for the Step Enforcement Grant Overtime, which is about 20,000. So we'd just like to apply for those grants. Once again, if we can get money to help us in any direction, that's a good thing.
We're always happy to get money. Greatly noted, PJ. Thank you, guys, for the job you do out there, keeping us safe. I really appreciate the work you do, especially on our DUI areas. So I'm greatly in favor of this.
I'll go ahead and make a motion, Chairman Mack, that we go ahead and approve the application or approve the opportunity to apply for FY 2025 Governor's Office of Highway Safety DUI Overtime and Step Enforcement Overtime Grants.
And I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. And my last one is also another approval to apply for the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission Drug, Gang and Violent Crime Control Program Grant, which is about 26,000 for that one. This one is a 50-50 match for us. So 13 grand would be our match for that one. But we're asking if we can apply for this also.
Again, another very vital program that you guys provide. And again, PJ, I appreciate the way you guys go at this and, and go after these grants. It helps our, our community a great deal. So I'm definitely in favor.
And this Supervisor David, I agree. And it does take a tremendous amount of effort to not only to track, apply for, and then, and then track, and then report on. So this, even though it looks like free money, someone's doing an awful lot of work to show compliance so that we can qualify for the renewal on these grants. So I'd make a motion that we go ahead and, and approve the opportunity to apply for this Arizona Criminal Justice Drug, Gang and Violent Crime Control Program Grant for 25, 20, fiscal year 25, 26.
And happily second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you so much, gentlemen. Thank you, Sheriff. We appreciate you and your guys and gals and all their hard work. We'll now hear from our county attorney, Mr. Scott Bennett.
Good morning.
Morning.
Very similar to the sheriff's request. That's what I'm bringing before you today. We're right in grant season. This is when all the renewals hit. Ultimately, we try to get the grants approved and they close them out and try to have everything in place by the beginning of the fiscal year. So in my continuing efforts to try to bring as much money into the county as I can, I've come across this new grant and I actually credit John Griffith. He worked with it in Pinal County and he advised me of it. I wasn't familiar with it, but he brought this to my attention. I don't know a ton about it, but basically it's designed to assist with the prosecution of auto theft cases. Now, traditionally in Graham County, that hasn't been a huge problem. But as I'm sure you're well aware, we had a duo come in from out of town. And anyway, if nothing else, maybe they've given us the numbers we need to qualify for this grant. So while they're both sitting safely in our jail, maybe we'll, we'll find the silver lining and use this to get some funds. So ultimately, that is my request. I'd like to go ahead and apply for this grant. I have no idea if our numbers will meet their criteria, but I figure I don't mind staying late one day to get the application in. We'll see what happens.
Great.
Appreciate your effort, Scott, for the hard work you do over there as well to protect us here in Graham County. So anything we can do to make us safer here in this county and, and go after, I'm all in favor of.
Yeah, Chairman Mack, I'd also share that I'm hoping that the, the recent obtaining of funding for Thatcher and Stafford and additional funding for Graham County for the license, well, that was for vehicles, but the license plate readers efforts for Graham and Stafford and Thatcher will, will put us in a good position to be able to assist with the vehicle theft task force and that they'll recognize that our investment and that they'll go ahead and award a grant to us this year. So I'm in favor. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the county attorney's office application for the Arizona Auto Theft Authority Vehicle Task Force Grant for fiscal year 25.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. We appreciate you in your office. We'll now hear from our school superintendent, Ms. Donna McGoy.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
I'm here to present the annual intergovernmental agreements between my office, the Board of Supervisors, and Dan Hinton School, which is part of the Graham County Special Services Consortium. And I'll, I have three of them, so I'll start with Fort Thomas. And this agreement includes three of the four that have been part of the consortium. Pima is not being presented today. They're keeping all of their special needs students in, under their roof beginning in August of this year. So you only have three instead of the four that you've seen the last two years. And this is the agreement that they will receive services not only on their campus, but the self-contained classrooms at the Dan Hinton School. And we also provide, we provide services for mainly speech at the other campuses. That's not changing. And I'll start with Fort Thomas.
Any questions or concerns, Supervisor Howard?
Want to thank Donna as well, all the hard work that goes into this. People don't realize the work you guys do up there in that office and keeping our kids educated and keeping these programs going. So it's very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Supervisor David?
Yeah. Chairman Mack, I'll go ahead and move that we approve the IGA between Graham County and Fort Thomas School District for the Graham County Special School Services Consortium.
And I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes.
Thank you. And the second one is identical. This one is with Thatcher Unified School District.
Got to take care of the meagles.
That's right.
I'll go ahead and make a motion on this. And this is for the IGA between Graham County and Thatcher Unified School Districts for the Graham County Special Services Consortium, including Dan Hinton Schools.
Second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes.
And the last one is with Benita Elementary School District. And I get asked from time to time, how does, how do we serve that district? And it's our mainly speech therapists that make the trip out there several times a week to service those students and any occupational therapy or physical therapy needs they may have. They don't typically send kids in, but they have in the past. But they are also part of our consortium.
Thank you. I'm all for it.
Get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve intergovernment agreement between Graham County School Superintendent and Benita Elementary School District and members of the Graham County Special Consortium, which includes Dan Hinton Schools.
And I'll second Supervisor Howard's motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And I want to acknowledge the hard work that Jean Ruff has put into these IGAs several, for several years now, on top of her busy plate. Dealing with multiple entities is not easy. So I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you, Jean. All right. Now we'll hear from Mr. Brett Bluth from the assessor's office.
Good morning.
Morning.
Brett Bluth here on behalf of the assessor's office. Assessor Monteith is out of town. The assessor's office is seeking approval to extend Jerry Robinson's work agreement through the end of April 2025 at less than 25 hours, I'm sorry, 20 hours a week.
We know you're very busy over there. It's probably a much-needed service, so I have no objection to this whatsoever.
Supervisor David?
Thank you, Brett, for representing. And yeah, Jerry's work is, and her willingness to fill in is very much appreciated. And, and so I'd go ahead and move that we approve the extension of her work agreement for less than 20 hours a week to process title transfers for your office.
I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. All right. We will now hear from Cindy Orr from the treasurer's office.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. It's my broken record also that I'm here to present an offer for an over-the-counter tax deed on parcel 10959025. This offer meets the minimum required to cover all the back taxes, interest and fees that have been accrued.
We appreciate the broken record. You clean these, cleaning these up for us is great.
Absolutely.
Supervisor Howard?
Thank you, Cindy, for all you do up there. I'll make a motion, if there's no other discussion, to approve the offer to the over-counter tax deed for parcel 10959025.
Supervisor David, second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. All right. Now we will hear from Mindy Young with the Superior Court.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Superior Court is requesting approval for a limited services contract with Dr. John Walker. He does Rule 11 evaluations. This is a new limited service contract for competency evaluations. Dr. Cooper Lopez is unavailable right now and we have four, four motions pending. So we need to conduct four evaluations with someone. So we found two doctors. This is the first contract. I'll present another one in a couple of weeks. But it's coming out of the same fund and he is only going to do Rule 11 evaluations when Dr. Cooper Lopez is unavailable. A Rule 11 is basically when a defendant is, to determine if a defendant is deemed incompetent to stand trial. So, and the contract will take us through June 30, 2026.
Thank you for explaining Rule eleven to the public there. Appreciate it. I think this is a service that will be greatly helpful to us at this time.
I've got a question, Chairman, from India, that is, we have not worked with Dr. Walker before. Is that correct?
We've done one evaluation with him before. The judges were satisfied. I ran it by the county attorney. He had no objection. So I think we just get started and see how it goes. We only have two scheduled with Dr. Walker.
Okay. Well, that's, that's good that we have a little history with him and that he's comfortable, I'm guessing he's comfortable in a tele, using teleconference evaluation. So I'd go ahead and we'll take the judge's and the county attorney's recommendation and make a motion that we go ahead and approve the limited services agreement with Dr. John Walker for Rule eleven evaluations for fiscal years twenty-five, twenty-six.
I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you, Mindy. All right. Now we will hear from our Engineering Department, Eric Engel.
Good morning. This is for approvals to accept right-of-way. They're all on Powerline Road and they're all fifty feet wide. Would you like to take these individually? No, all together? Okay, so the first one's from Mark Woods, parcel one oh six oh six oh four eight A. The second one is Bart and Vicky Carter, parcel one oh six oh six oh four nine B. And then Cindy Donegan has two parcels, one oh six oh six oh four one and one oh six oh six oh four oh. And then Clifford Reedhead has parcel one oh six oh six oh six five. Jimmy and Rebecca Post have parcels one oh six oh six oh two eight and one oh six oh six oh three three and one oh six oh six oh seven nine. And the last one is from Derek and Julie Hogan, parcel one oh six oh six oh one nine.
Awesome. I want to thank the Engineering Department. You guys have worked super hard to get these right-aways on Powerline Road. Powerline Road is very rough and can be very dangerous at times. And they've worked hard to get these right-aways so that hopefully we can get that road chip sealed and eliminate some of the problems on that road. Supervisor Howard?
No comment. I'm just happy they got to this point where we're moving along with it and hopefully get this done for the citizens out that side of town.
Supervisor David?
And Chairman Mack, I just wanted to, in addition to thanking the Engineering Department, when there was a difficulty or needed a little encouragement or a little personal, a little more of a personal touch, I appreciated you going out and visiting with these people who are your constituents and encouraging them and giving them assurances. And you were key and instrumental. You're very humble and would pat yourself on the back for this, but I, I will. And thank you very much. And I'll be glad to make a motion that we approve these, the acceptance of these right-of-way parcel donations there on Powerline Road. And I will defer to the county manager, Dustin. Do we need to actually list these parcels individually? Or can I just say the parcels as, as mentioned in my motion?
Supervisor David, Eric Engel did a good job of listing all of those, so I think we can say as already mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
And I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Eric. All right. Now we'll hear from Julie Rodriguez.
Good morning. I'm here to ask for approval of an IT Services Consulting Agreement with Bob Hemming between March third of twenty-five until June thirtieth of twenty-six. This would benefit both the Treasures Office and the Finance Office. Bob has been working with Tyler New World, which is the product that we use since two thousand nine. And he actually wrote the middle database that allows the Treasures current system to talk to the finance system to give us revenues. And as you know, the Treasures are in a process of getting new software built by Harris, which is called Collectware, and Bob is integral in that process. He's working with Santa Cruz on their side, so he has knowledge of that entire process too. So it will allow him to do some programming support. Both the Treasures Office and Finance, we work on the number side, but we try not to get in the backend of those computer systems. So Bob has a lot of expertise. And for example, one of the audit reports we're going to ask him to write, it takes me about thirty-five to forty hours to manually do, and we're hoping that he can write a code that will make the report run for me in two minutes. So that's the kind of help we're looking for.
Awesome. That's great. Supervisor Howard?
That would certainly be a blessing to you and to the county, time-saving. Sounds like a great deal to me. Appreciate all your hard work you do there, Julie, and staying on top of these things. It certainly is beneficial to the countywide. Thank you very much.
Supervisor David?
I'm, I'm just waiting for a motion to second.
I will make a motion to approve the IT Service Consultant Agreement with Robert Hemming from March third, twenty-twenty-five to June thirty, twenty-twenty-six.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay. Then Julie, you're going to go ahead and explain this one?
Yes, I'd be glad to.
Great, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is for the board, but it actually relates very much to finance. So I'm looking for approval of Resolution twenty-two-five oh three, which is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of Graham County, Arizona, authorizing the execution and delivery of an intergovernmental agreement with the Graham County Jail District, authorizing the execution and delivery of a continuing disclosure certificate of the county, and authorizing the taking of all other necessary, action necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this resolution. As you know, we're looking into the possibility of doing a jail bond refunding, which hopefully will save us money on our yearly debt service. We currently have about twenty-one point nine eight million dollars in outstanding bonds that are eligible at this point to be refunded. And so we're working with a finance team and a municipal advisor to have this happen. But as I've shown you guys before, there's a lot of documents that need to be created. And so this authorization of the resolution allows that process to get moving.
Great. Supervisor Howard?
This is just something to get us ahead of the game, the way I read things and being prepared for when we are able to do that refundable amount of bonding. Is that correct?
Correct. And to set the parameters that we're looking for, no less than a three percent net present value of savings. So if it doesn't, if we're not at that point, we will not, we will not refund.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Supervisor David, do you have anything?
No, I would just say the, to simplify this for myself and maybe others who are listening, it's a upgrade to refinancing your house and getting a, this is hypothetical, by the way. The stars have to be in alignment. The interest rates have to come down by, the Fed rate has to come down by between a quarter and a half a point before this is even feasible. So we're giving permission to pursue this. We have our, all of our costs that we'll bear, with the exception of getting a rating is, are unloaded and won't, we won't incur a cost, with the exception of our internal efforts by Julie and Brandon and Jennifer to get this done and until the situation is such that we, that it makes more economic sense. So I'm in favor of moving forward. As Julie said, it would be early calculations, and these are just estimates, would save the county about three hundred thousand dollars a year. That's going to vary depending on conditions. But with, by rewriting, re-bonding, in essence, then we're putting ourselves in a position to save the taxpayers a substantial amount of money over the remainder of the life of this bond. So I'm in favor. And I'll make a motion on this one, that we go ahead and approve Resolution twenty-two-five dash zero three to authorize the execution and delivery of the IGA with the Graham County Jail District, authorizing the execution and delivery of a disclosure certificate of the county and letting people know what we're doing, and authorizing the taking of other actions to the consummation of the transaction contemplated. And of course, as explained prior to the motion, this is going to be based on market conditions. And so that's my motion.
I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. We're going to hear from the Jail District Board, actually Julie again. Thank you.
Dustin, do we need to do anything?
Yeah, so just noting that the Board of Supervisors is now entering into a session as the Jail District Board. Jail District Board is the Board of Supervisors, but we're transitioning to the Jail District Board meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. So this is kind of an interesting thing. So you have to have two members, two groups to make an IGA, excuse me. So we just had the county one approved and now we have to do the opposite side with the Jail District. So I'm seeking approval of Resolution twenty-two-five oh two, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Graham County Jail District of Graham County, Arizona, authorizing the execution and delivery of a ground lease agreement, a first lease purchase agreement, a first trust agreement, an obligation purchase contract, a county continuing disclosure undertaking, and an intergovernmental agreement, an escrow agreement, approval, approving the delivery of a preliminary official statement, approving the execution and delivery of an official statement, approving the issuance and sale of not to exceed twenty-two million of the district's pledged revenue refunding obligations, Series twenty-fifteen, evidencing a proportionate interest of the owners, therefore, in the first lease purchase agreement, and authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transaction contemplated by this resolution.
That was a lot. Supervisor Howard?
This all just ties in with each other, so it's just a
They do.
Statement that you had to do and a thing we have to do. So yeah, I don't have a problem with this.
Supervisor David?
No, I'm, I'm okay. This is, again, conditional, but we have to, to pass this resolution so that we can move forward. So that our, in the event that the market conditions are favorable, that we can then obtain a savings for the county. And so I appreciate that very much. Julie's work, her insights, anticipation of and ways to save the county a substantial amount of money. I mean, if we, if there was, the do-nothing is, is we just continue to retire the existing bond and pay interest and approximately seven million dollars, which are in, as part of the security or surety for the bonds, being able to access that for the, to be able to refund or refinance these bonds, that actually takes that from a non, and it's not earning us any, any money. And it's, it represents a tremendous amount of money and we're putting it to work. And so I'm in favor and thank Julie and the, her staff for the efforts to take advantage of this opportunity if, again, if the market conditions will allow. And we're looking at a six-month process or so. So I'd go ahead and make a motion, unless you have comment, Chairman, that we approve Resolution twenty-two-five dash zero two between the Board of Directors of the Jail District and on behalf of Jail District.
Glad to second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. And we will now exit our Jail District Board meeting and go back into our regular meeting. At this time, we'll have an opportunity for the Board of Supervisors and County Manager to give us a brief summary of current events. And we will start with Manager Welker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We've been working quite a bit with our County Supervisors Association as the legislature's been in full swing and working on a lot of bills in defense. We've also been watching the Legislative Budget Committee quite a bit to see what they're going to do at the state level and watching the federal level. I want to thank Supervisor David. He's down there with some key issues. Some of our key revenues come from federal funds and state funds. One very notable one is our PIL payment. That's our payment in lieu of taxes, which is over three million dollars a year. And that has not been secured yet. So he's, he's back there with some other supervisors and other western counties throughout the country, really, advocating for those funds. They're very critical for Graham County. So we appreciate that. And going into budget season, we're certainly heavily looking at all of our revenues and expenses as they come in and go out. We'll be sending out budget letters to all the department heads and elected officials this week. And we'll be scheduling and organizing all of our budget hearings. So there's a lot that we're looking at. We are seeing still some good positive signs on our local sales tax for February. That came in above last year. So we're, we're trending about fourteen percent overall, year to year, on the local sales tax, which is good. On the state shared side, not as well, but still trending over last year's at about eleven percent. Again, we're watching these real close. The economy just feels a little iffy right now and there's a lot that's going to happen in the next few months that'll have a big impact on our budget as we keep watching that. We, we were able to make some good progress on some, some projects these last few weeks. The jail freezer cooler for our evidence storage, our evidence room at the jail, completed. BND Air Conditioning did that project. Did a very good job. We were able to stay under budget on that. Matt Hart is working to replace the four large air conditioning units over a probation. And Advanced Air was able to receive that bid. And again, we were able to get that under budget. So that was, that was a good thing. I'm working with, Eric and I are working with a couple consultants for landscape and water system plan for the fairgrounds. We have an RFP out to them and that's due on March sixth. So we're hopeful to see where that comes in this week. We've been lining up, creating our parking lots out at the fairgrounds with a DOC crew. I've been working with Dan Turley. He's, he's here locally, but runs a crew that has a paving machine and some other large equipment. So we're hoping to take care of that project with some, with some very advantageous labor. And we're hoping to get that started in the next month or so. Out at the Common Sense Building, our local, our parks guys were able to do the demolition on that floor. And Brandon Luck Construction went and finished that last week and did a really good job. So, so we're happy to have our Common Sense Building back. And we were able to stay under budget on that project too. We're going to open some bids today. One will be the shade structure. So we'll see how that bid comes in. We also had our field three lights. Those bids were due last week. We'll be analyzing them. Those were actually quotes, not bids. So we'll be looking at those and awarding those this week. We also awarded our transfer site concrete aprons, pouring some concrete out there in some areas that had, had grown rough. And that bid was awarded to Peterbilt Construction. So we're anxious to see that project going. Our IT department has been working on our data storage replacement. That was probably our largest working on our data storage replacement. That was probably our largest budgeted project other than our Motorola upgrade, which is ongoing. But we were able to physically get that installation complete. Some of that equipment's already online, and there's some remote pieces to finish out that should be finished by the midway of this March, and then we'll be closing that project out. So, we're happy for that. I wanna thank the, the Fairgrounds, Trey and his crew. They hosted a very big event. The Big Buck Contest was, was last week, and we get a lot of people out there, and they do a really good, good event. We were able to use our ag building with that concrete poured on the second half now. It makes that building much more usable and user-friendly, and has become a great venue for a very large event like that. I just wanna thank the guys for all their, their work they did out there. And on the highway crew, they've been doing a lot of work. South of town, on the other side of the mountain, on Ash Creek Road, they, they kept over five miles of road, bringing in new material and rebuilding essentially a large portion of that road. So, I wanna thank them for all that work. They've been going throughout, getting ready for chip seal season, which is coming up in May, and patching roads and prepping those. In your staff report, it has all of the roads that will be doing chip seal maintenance on, which is quite a few miles. So, we're, we're anxious to get into our chip seal season, and I wanna thank the Highway Department for their hard work as well. And that's my report for now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Howard?
Yeah, I'll be brief. Last week, we all traveled down to our CSA meetings, the small counties, and the regular board meeting down in Phoenix, listening to the different bills being proposed. And like Dustin said, our defense and offense, whichever ones we're, we were against her before. And on the 25th, I had the opportunity to go to EAC, to the Hispanic Chamber Luncheon. They were here kinda reaching out Ollie Branch and telling us all what they do. It was a beneficial luncheon. On the 27th, I had the opportunity to attend a meeting in the City of Safford. It was about their events and the different issues on the holiday events, and well, all the events that's on Main Street, what they do, and the cost, and the ideas of different citizens, and how we can participate. It was a beneficial meeting. And I've also just been this last week or two, along with Dustin and Clay and Paul, we've been reaching out to our legislators on the issues. I've reached out to our state legislators a few times, plus our federal legislators back in Washington, again, about our very important PILT funding, SRS funding, have reached out to our representatives in Washington on that. And I wanna give a big shout out to Trey for the Big Buck Contest. What an amazing event. The new cement in the, in the building was amazing, a lot cleaner. It was wonderful. And I will have to say, compliment you on the bathrooms. They were amazing. They were clean. They were lighted. They, they were taken very good care of. Of course, I'm sure the folks out there appreciate it, too. But a big shout out to you, Trey, for the work you do out there on that and the success of the Big Buck Contest. That'd be all I have.
Thank you. Supervisor David?
Thank you, Chairman. Just very briefly, following our last supervisors meeting, you met with our emergency response department, Colin Channing and Brian, and was very pleased that they've made the significant process, and now are able to issue county-wide alerts, and not just depend on the state system or, or an internal system. So, I appreciate that and provide a little more peace of mind for emergency events. The following day, there was a local committee to end homelessness, and then I traveled to, to Phoenix for some board meetings. And, and then following that, there was a CEGO meeting, Southeastern Arizona Governments Organization meeting in, in Wilcox on a Friday, two Fridays ago. And they have, there's a new executive director, and Christopher Trees, who's been in charge of transportation and kinda been the number two, unofficial number two. He is now the new executive director, and looking forward to his continued stability and leadership and guidance. There was a, um, Board Supervisor, I'm sorry, City Council meeting, and then a Rural Transportation Advisory Council Board meeting that I attended on last Monday. And then the, I already mentioned the Chamber of Commerce meeting. That was, was well done. And that's my report, other than that I've traveled and I'm in DC and appreciate the opportunity to represent Graham County and hope that it's cost-effective, that I can do enough good to justify the, the expense. I traveled coach, and I've walked most of the, to most of my meetings from the motel to the convention. So, I'm, I'm trying to do this as inexpensively as possible and still have a good outcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor David. I also attended a lot of the same stuff as Supervisor Howard and David. Just wanna thank our County Supervisors Association down in the valley publicly. Those guys spend a lot of time researching and going over the, the bills that our legislators vote on and keep us very informed, and give us support when we need it. And just wanna, just wanna thank them for their hard work. We'll now have a public hearing and turn the time over to Mr. McGoy from our Planning and Zoning Department.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
It is now time for a public hearing on a zone, zone change request. I don't see our applicant here, but this is Rezone 925-25, parcel number 10730048. It's a little over five acres, and the request is to rezone from A Zone to M Zone to bring the property into compliance. The property is being used for a kennel and has been for quite some time. As you will remember, we, we rezoned a part of the farm, the Clontes Farm here a while back to facilitate a trust dispersion. And in, in doing our inspections of, of that property out there, we found, we found this kennel and asked them to please bring it into compliance. They didn't know that you couldn't do that, and most people probably don't. But they said, sure, whatever we need to do. So, Wade and Terry Leinberger applied, 7716 East Sanchez Road, and this is, this is across from the San Jose Prison, across the river, quite, quite a ways, but that's the only thing up on top of that hill you can see. There's, well, actually, there's a neighbor a mile and a half away, Gil Bowman, but they're up there, and nobody can see them, and they can't see anybody, or they can see everybody probably. But we heard nothing from neighbors. We heard nothing from the family, other than support. One of our commissioners relayed a story of a vet, I believe it was a vet, going up to the facility and, and saying, if I get to come back in my next life as a dog, I hope it's with you.
Great. Do we have anybody from the public? Seeing none? Oh, do you wanna add something, sir? Oh, okay. Okay. Supervisor Howard?
I think it's great that people will cooperate with you to make, get their businesses and their things in compliance and without any issue about it. So, I take my hat off to them for being able to step up and do that and make things easier for us. So, I have no issues with this whatsoever.
Supervisor David?
Yeah, I wanna echo Supervisor Howard. When, when we have existing facilities that come into a, into compliance, it makes it so much easier when there are people who are going to establish or who aren't in compliance. They, they can't just say, well, so-and-so doesn't, they're doing it, and they don't have the zoning. And, and as we cross these off and, and get people in compliance, it, it just reflects well on our, our, our county Planning and Zoning Department. So, thank you very much. And I'll make a motion that, and what could be a better place than up in the middle of nowhere, up on a hill? You'd probably hear more coyotes than you do dogs there. And so, I'd go ahead and make a motion that we do approve the rezoning request for REZ 925-25, parcel number 107-30048, for the Leinbergers, from general land use to general manufacturing.
Be happy to second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you, Steve.
We have a call to the public. Kui Wallace? Louis, sorry. Awesome. Thank you.
I'm gonna be brief about this. I live south of the fairgrounds. There is no enforcement of any kind out there, even for animal control. This has to stop. July 29th to 24th, I was hit by a semi because he was in the left lane. That's against not just federal law, which I was a truck driver, but Arizona. Either enforcement steps up out there and things change out there, or I'm gonna become an after somebody seat in here to where I take over. Because anybody in this public has a right to sit in those seats. If you guys all took an oath to protect us, but you all also wanted to make a change, not one person's out here making any life better but for their constituents, the people they choose. We all live out here. We all want Graham County better. Just because that's known as a drug area out there, not all of us are drug addicts. Step up and do something. Cause I'm now living my life in pain every day because of lack of enforcement out there. I don't wish anybody being hit by a semi or a car at 50 miles an hour. 30 mile an hour impact is enough to kill somebody. 55, 45, even the highway, all them, highway patrol, nobody slows down, even in the 35. Police and all them need to step up. Nobody's out here protecting us. That's all I gotta say.
All right. Thank you. All right. Take this opportunity to open some bids.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, this first bid is for the Solomon Road Asphalt Replacement. This is a project we've had budgeted this year and have anticipated. There's a very rough spot just east of Highway 191 on Solomon Road. We've had a lot of issues with. Our Highway Department will be doing all the demo, and then all the subgrade work, bringing in the AB and compacting it down, going down several feet to, to try to remedy the situation. So, these, these bids are to come in after we've done the subgrade work and, and relay the asphalt on the, on the patch that we're doing. I think it's about 1,500 feet. Steve, is that right? 1,500 feet of two-lane roadway on Solomon Road. I think we received two bids. This one, first one is from Sunland Asphalt and Construction LLC out of Tucson. Their bid is total bid $222,506. That's for labor material and all taxes included, 222,506. This next bid is from CKC Construction and Materials. Their total bid is $150,281.89, and that includes labor, labor materials and taxes. Do we have a third?
I think that's, that's it.
No. So, we'll need a motion on this.
Question for the, this is Supervisor David. Question for Dustin. What, is there a county estimate available?
Steve, do we have a, but we do have a budget on that that we can share with you after the meeting. Supervisor David?
Okay, but it's not publicly. You don't, you don't have an estimate that you wanna...
We, we do not publicly advertise an estimate or the budget.
Okay, understood. Well, then I would, if there are no other questions from our board, I'd make a motion that we note the bids which have been submitted, turn them over to our internal, to you, Dustin, and our Highway Department and Engineering for review for both conformity and, and then awarded to, approve the awarding of it to the lowest conforming bidder.
I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you, Supervisor David. The next one is for the ballpark concessions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this is an annual bid we put out going the other way. It's one of the few bids that we're asking them to pay us, so this is a good one. But we have our, our concession stands out at the fairgrounds, and we need someone to run it for the next about eight months for Little League season, softball season, and then coed and adult softball season that runs through the summer. So, we just received one bid for this from Erica Vargas. There is a minimum bid on this of $1,500, and, and their bid was $1,700. And then there is a, there is a menu attached that'll only make us hungry, so I won't read it. But a good menu.
Dustin, what organization was that?
It just says Erica and Vargas. Let me see if there's more. That's all, that's all I have.
Okay, that's fine. I just curious.
Great. Can we get a motion?
Yeah, anything? Paul, does he have any?
Supervisor David, do you have any comments?
No, no. And I imagine that Mr. Vargas is not currently registered or currently approved by the Health Department, that he'll come in compliance if we award this bid.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll go ahead and make a motion, if there's no other conversation, to turn this over to staff for review and conformity and award it to the lowest bidder.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you, Supervisor Howard. Our next bid is on the shop's shade structure at the fairgrounds.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the, we had the unfortunate fire a few years ago, and it burnt down a lot of our playground. We were able to take the usable members that didn't burn in the fire and, and use them to rebuild the structure over at our maintenance yard, so our guys can use it for a shade structure for our equipment out there. So, this first bid is from Lunt Construction, and his total bid is 61,500. That includes taxes and shipping and everything. I think we have three bids on this.
Yes, sir.
This next bid is from Wright Brothers Welding, and their bid is $48,000 even. This next bid is from Wright Brothers Welding and their bid is $48,000 even. And the last bid is Ward Brothers Metal Buildings. And their bid is 74,200.
Great. Thank you, Manager Walker. Supervisor David, did you have any questions or concerns?
No, it's, it's great to have the local, local bidders and, and to, they all seem fairly reasonable. So, that's, it's great to have that, that kind of competition.
If so, no other conversation, I'll make a motion to approve this and send it to staff for conformity and award to the lowest bidder.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Um, this time we're gonna close our regular meeting and go into executive session.
Need a motion?
Need a motion?
Make a motion, go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes.
For their patients, we're going to close our executive session and go back into our regular meeting. Do we have a motion on what was discussed in our executive session?
Let's motion to get out.
Oh.
Make a motion to get out of executive session.
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, do we have a motion on what was discussed in our executive session?
Sir, Chairman, I will make a motion to direct staff to negotiate the counter settlement offer based on prior negotiated surrender.
And I'll second Supervisor Howard's motion.
All in favor say aye.
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 Aye.